Good evening. I'd like to welcome to Albany City Council meeting, January 22, 2025 at 6:00 PM. I'll now call the meeting to order. Would you please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Eric, can do a roll call, please?
Councillor Newton Azor.
Present.
Councillor Thompson.
Here.
Councillor Monague.
Here.
Councillor McLeod.
Present.
Councillor Smith.
Here.
Councillor McGee.
Present.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Next on tonight's agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding amendments to the Albany Development Code as specified in Planning File CP 02-24/DC04-24. The applicant is the City of Albany Community and Development Department. I call to order this legislative public hearing at 6:01 PM. If you wish to testify, there were two options available, which are described on the council agenda and in the notice materials. At this time, I'll call for a staff report by project planner Liz Olmstead.
Thank you. I'm Anne Catlin, and we'll be answering your questions. So just give us a minute. We were trying to get the presentation up, and we may be going without slides, but you've got all the materials in your packet. So I'll just go ahead and get started. So this is a package of amendments that we've been working on to implement strategies in the Housing Implementation Plan. It's amendments to both the Development Code and some minor amendments in the Conference Plan. The purpose of this is to try to encourage housing types that we aren't seeing built in our community, and those are small homes, small single-level homes, you know, empty nester, first-time homebuyer, accessory dwelling units, middle housing, apartments, affordable housing, and accessible housing, so a variety of housing types. So we have identified through the Housing Implementation Plan and additional work with the public and with the development community amendments to try to address the housing needs that I just described. So one of those is increasing flexibility for accessory dwelling units. So that is a proposal that we currently have a maximum size of 900 square feet, but it's also up to 50% of the primary dwelling unit. So the proposal is to allow houses that are smaller to have a larger percentage of their house be, or of the accessory dwelling unit take up a larger percent of the house size. So for smaller houses, those that are, the house just needs to be 25 square feet larger than the accessory dwelling unit, or the accessory dwelling unit can only be, you know, 25 square feet smaller, whichever way you want to look at that. So we are also trying to encourage and facilitate small houses, and we're doing that by proposing to scale house, lot size to house size. So for, we're not seeing houses being built under 1,250 square feet. Most of them are 1,400 square feet and over, and we've heard that it's the minimum lot sizes in our zones. So we're looking at scaling lot size to house size to different levels, about 65% of the base zone lot size for houses between 800 and 1,250 square feet, and then 50% of the lot size for houses under 800 square feet. We're also trying to encourage more usable backyards. We've heard that, you know, when you get smaller lots, and even with the current lots, you don't have very usable backyards, so we're reducing your front yard setback and increasing the backyard setback. We're also, with smaller houses on smaller lots, in order to make them work and pencil, we need to reduce the side yard setbacks for those types and for townhouses. So that's also part of the proposal. So then cottage clusters are a form of smaller house types, and we have not had a successful development come through the city yet. So we've looked at our standards, and some of them are the common courtyard size, et cetera. So we're looking at removing barriers to the cottage cluster form of development. We're also trying to incentivize smaller homes within the cottage clusters, so there's some standards there. That's in Article 8. Then we're also looking at removing obstacles to development in higher-density zones. We want higher density to happen in the RM, RMA, and the, that's medium-density zones and higher-density zones. And right now, we've got a density cap, which limits, you know, it, we need a lot of one-bedroom units, for example, but if, you know, you can build 25 four-bedroom units and 25 one-bedroom units, you know, it, we're not getting some of the housing types that we need. And plus, we have lot coverage and height that are in the zones that really control the scale of that development. We have setbacks and buffers to lower-density uses. So we're trying to remove obstacles to ensure that those are the areas where we see more dense development, for a lot of reasons. And we're trying to incentivize affordable and accessible housing. We already have some development standards, density bonuses, but if we remove the density cap, there isn't really a density bonus, so we just, the state has, we've already adopted some requirements to allow an increase in height for affordable housing. We're looking at doing some of that for accessible housing, because we know we need more accessible housing. And so we're, it looks like there's a lot in new stuff, but a lot of stuff kind of just got moved around and just massaged a little bit because of the changes in our development standards. And then we have heard from the community that, you know, with denser housing types, middle housing types, you know, where are people going to park? Where is the park? And we don't require parking anymore. We've heard, what about the green space? People don't, you know, tiny or lots and no yards, and townhouses don't have much yard. So we are proposing to require a small amount of open space in subdivisions. This is not something we've done before. So for developments with 20 or more lots, we would require a small amount of open space, and that's 50 square feet per lot. We already require some common open space in multi-dwelling unit development, some other standards that you'll see in Article 8. We're trying to just make sure that space is usable and also provides a little more flexibility for both the common open space and the private open space for multi-dwelling units. And then when it comes to, you know, reserving the street for cars and parking, we know that narrower lots, if you've got driveways taking up a large percentage of that lot frontage, it doesn't leave a lot of room for cars. So we're trying to incentivize alley or rear-loaded development, so that maybe we will start seeing that, and in combination with houses being closer to the street, freeing up maybe the street with no curb cuts and parking, we might see nicer neighborhoods. So there are a couple other administrative issues in the code, and, but primarily trying to address some of our housing needs. So there are review criteria that we need to look at. Those are in the Conference Plan, well, they're Development Code review criteria, but essentially we need to comply with all the statewide planning goals and with our goals and policies in the Conference Plan. So we need to make sure that the changes support the policies and goals and are consistent with them. And so one of the criterias is that we do that, and there's citizen participation, goaltend housing, there are a lot of different goals, but we did do, I'll take a moment to tell you about our citizen participation. We have been kind of working on housing issues for several years before the Housing Affordability Task Force was created and the Housing Implementation Plan was created. We were meeting with people about middle housing, so we've been working with people all along and building on that work. But we held seven focus groups on these items, and we also had a community survey. We've had an interested parties email list. And then we also were required to send out what we call a Measure 56 Notice to property owners that we believe would be negatively affected by the proposed changes, and those were, we don't necessarily know that they would be negatively affected, but we were complying with state law, and then we posted at, published ads in the paper per state law and notified state agencies. So the, one of the other criterias that legislative amendments are needed to meet changing conditions and new laws, we've had a lot of new laws come through the state related to housing. Some of these are massaging those. We've tried them out. Things aren't working, like middle housing, et cetera. And trying to, I mean, the state wants us to address our housing needs, which are identified in that housing needs analysis that we adopted in 2020. So we are trying to respond. We're also trying to respond to community concerns, and we know that we're back with adjustments from time to time, and this is what we think will be helpful moving forward in the package of amendments. And with that, I will note that Marilyn caught a typo in the Bolden Strike. There is a revised Exhibit A, Page 3-24 on your agenda. I modified the motions for you to reflect that. We'll be happy to answer questions now, and of course, also after public testimony. You received testimony that we presented to the Planning Commission, and then everything that came in prior to this evening was either emailed to you or put onto the dais, so we are happy to answer questions after the public hearing.
Justin, I have a question for the city clerk, a city recorder. Can you come take a look at this? So the reason for me pausing, because the public hearing guide did not have a section for public hearing and public input. So the city clerk's going to try to find it for me so I can bring that into the public hearing.
Yep, sorry.
Please be patient with me, okay?
Yep. So yeah, I'm sorry, Mary, I just noticed that. So next would be the public hearing, and you can hear from people who signed up and then those that didn't sign up, and there is no need to do those in favor first or whatever, like we need to do with quasi-judicial hearing procedures. Sorry about that.
There's no worries. Is there a sign-in sheet over there?
Yep.
I just want to make sure we're legal. That's what I want to do.
Yep.
Once I get the language back, I want to make sure I read the language per code, so there's no problems going forward. Hold this morning. No language in this. Thank you. So I want to say thank you to our community relevant director, Matthew Rutgers. He's informed me that this is not a quad, oh, there he is right there. I have the list here. Language for me? So thank you. We'll go ahead and resume. Written comments were submitted to council, and they were forwarded to us by our city recorder, so thank you for those comments. We have them and read them this afternoon. I will now call upon those registered to speak. The first person on the list is Rob, Robert Han, Han, Hanifer? Oh, thank you, sir. Please come up. To the dais, yes, but not to the table, and just say where you live in the city of Albany, your name.
Robert Hanifer, is that good?
Yes, thank you.
2359 Northwest Violet.
The address is not necessary, just declare you live in the city of Albany.
Okay, I live in the city of Albany.
Well, because I don't want people using your address against you if they record the meeting and they watch it back, so.
That's fine.
Safety.
Yeah. So I don't believe it's in the code, but in the materials that were provided. I understand that the city is considering special tax treatments to incentivize development, perhaps even considering donating surplus land as part of developments. That was in information that I'd either, I attended one of the meetings virtually. You know, since I believe the assets of Albany should serve Albany citizens, my question or I guess my suggestion is that any place where the city either directly or indirectly invests in the development, that one of the conditions for that is that the properties that are sold be restricted to sale to current residents of Albany.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
And the next speaker, Ms. Audrey Eldridge.
Audrey Eldridge, I live in Albany, and I am representing North Albany Neighborhood Association. Want to thank you for this time, and I am gonna, I did send you all my write-up, but I'm going to just make this very succinct if possible. I'm really concerned about the modification of the R10 zoning that's going to allow smaller lots for smaller homes. And I know the city indicated there's overwhelming public support for this proposal, and basically going down to 6,500 square foot lots in R10 zone land, and that the developers and builders have said they can't make those smaller homes pencil out on the 10,000 square foot lots. But we have several concerns, and I'm really concerned about how this change of zoning is done without actually changing the zoning, and instead effectively allowing the zoning to change for a given project as long as the house is smaller. And when do the voices of the people who live with the increased building and density get recognized at this same level? Why does it seem that there's more focus on the part of the city to allow more development, but not the same level of effort to make impacts from these developments and the increased density more manageable to the current residents? And what if the builders or developers later say they need lot sizes to be 4,000 square feet or 3,000, depends a lot? And well, would the city then say, well, even smaller homes on smaller lots would be okay in the R10 zoning? It's laudable that the city is trying to do the right for these people who want to live where they want to, in homes they consider more affordable, and for the builders that want to construct these homes. The residents of North Albany have asked and begged the city to listen to what they need, and yet generally, what happens is the city continues to allow more development, even if that building accelerates the traffic congestion. And we know about the traffic congestion and how sometimes it takes 15 to 20 minutes to just get through North Albany and into town. They love a, the current proposal is yet another mechanism that will increase the traffic and decrease public safety in North Albany. So I must ask, when a sink is plugged up, is that the time to add more water? The city may decide to move forward with the HIP, but at this time, we request that the implementation of this plan be deferred for North Albany, pending the city's ability to work with North Albany residents and better manage the traffic impacts. We ask that the city evaluate the process recommended by Senator Sarah Gelsor Bluen in a letter dated last November. This would allow the city to better plan for even distribution of lots that are appropriate for middle housing within a census block group and better manage the traffic impacts. It would also be an opportunity to look at where smaller homes or smaller lots would work best in North Albany. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Natalie Janney. Janney's, I thought, yeah, Natalie Janney. Did I say that correct? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councillors. My name is Natalie Janney. I'm a civil engineer at Multitec Engineering. Our office is at 1155 13th Street, Southeast in Salem, Oregon. We do a lot of development, mainly in the Mid-Willemette Valley, but we've done a fair few projects in the city of Albany. And in addition to that, last year, I sat on Governor Kotex Housing Production Advisory Council, so being in the space of figuring out how to remove barriers to housing is something that I've been familiar with for quite a while. I will say the city of Albany is pretty much the golden child when we talk about how to remove barriers for housing. Overall, staff is really well, easy to work with, very solution-oriented, and so I don't have a lot of comments about the Housing Implementation Plan, but I did want to discuss the open space for land divisions portion of this plan that was mentioned earlier. So essentially, this would require land divisions to create pocket parks, and something that has not been made clear in the code is who would be responsible for the maintenance and the ownership of the pocket parks. When this was brought up kind of to the development community a while ago, the city mentioned that these would need to be privately owned and maintained pocket parks, which would also necessitate the creation of a homeowners' association. Having these pocket parks, while they may seem somewhat small, the requirement, they would still require utilities and roads in front of them, which would have a cost. And so we did kind of a back-of-the-envelope calculation about what the increased cost to the remaining lots in development would be based on the creation of these pocket parks, and we're estimating that it's about $2,000 a lot, and that's before you take into account the homeowners' association and the long-term maintenance. And so perhaps it is the city of Albany decides that it's more important to allow for this increased lot cost in order to have this additional open space, and that's fine if that's what the city of Albany decides. We can make it work from an engineering perspective. It's just money, you know, I hate to say it, but my fear is that eventually, all these cumulative little changes that happen, while they're all good ideas on their own, they are cumulative, and eventually developers do walk away from projects. And right now, we are seeing quite a few developers walk away from projects. Or the other, the other thing that could happen is it could force developers to create high-end products versus more affordable products. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that, you know, to maybe weigh the unintended consequence that could happen from this pocket park requirement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Cameron Sotomayor. Are you online or is he here? Oh, he's here, okay.
My name is Cameron Sotomayor. I live in Hackman-Montesone District here in Albany. I have concerns about some of the Albany Development Code changes proposed in DC 424. In particular, I disagree with the changing of ADC 3.020, Section 8, as proposed on Page 17 of the Agenda Packet. I don't feel that a section of code saying that residential structures cannot be changed to non-residential uses should be removed from the code. If the purpose statement's not the correct location for that, then it should be moved over to Chapter 3, not removed from the code. Also, why are the garage sizes defined as not being included in a square footage on Page 31? How is this consistent with either the comprehensive plan or the stated purpose of affordable housing? For example, if you have a 925 square foot house, you can build a two-story ADU on the back that is 1,800 square feet, 900 square feet for an oversized three-car garage, and 900 square feet for the ADU on top. Garage size should be included in the total square footage. I'm a little bit concerned about the one-size-fits-all approach to these development standard changes. I believe it makes more sense to have separate development standards for bare land being developed versus infilling in areas that have already been developed. An example is a side setback, a small SDUs, SDUs and duplexes on reduced-size lots being three feet for one story and five feet for two-story dwellings, like the Agenda Packet, Page 30. Having a bunch of two-story duplexes 10 feet from each other and five-foot setbacks makes sense for affordable housing, where they're all built together in a new tract development on formerly bare land, and there are no side windows on the sides of the structure, and other mitigation measures are put into place all at once. But to place the same small two-story SDU or duplex into an existing neighborhood where existing abutting houses do not, do have side windows creates a privacy concern, and it's harder to institute mitigating measures in an already-developed neighborhood that was never developed for this kind of density. There can be clear and objective standards developed that allow for densely-packed new developments and at the same time have tighter infill size setback and height requirements so that infill development does not overwhelm existing neighborhoods. Another thing to realize is that development is done by developers for profit. It is a business model. If the code changes now allow higher density, existing small affordable housing is under the threat of tear-down for higher-value buildings, including higher-value single-family homes. This is already happening in Albany, and will continue to get worse with the removal of affordable starter homes from the equation. These homes are a critical component for first-time homeownership and a building block for people to build equity. Besides tightening infill compatibility standards, the Development Code also needs a demolition tax on small homes as a tool to protect the existing affordable house.
Thank you, Cameron. Appreciate it. Next is Mr. John Next is Mr. John Robinson.
Mayor Johnson. Housing can be broken down into what is referred to as the five Ls, meaning letter L. Land, labor, lumber, lending, and laws. It's the laws that the city has the most control and influence over. I think decisions regarding housing should pass a very easy test. If it reduces a financial cost or reduces regulation, then by all means, make the change. If, on the other hand, it raises the cost by increasing fees or adding additional taxes or increasing regulation, then the answer should always be no. What is in front of us is an excellent example of reducing regulation and offering options to increase the amount of housing that can be built. It passes my simple test and it should be adopted. I'm still opposed to the CET tax and the 20-year property tax exemption for subsidized housing. I appreciate that those two items were put on hold to allow more time for investigation and discussion. City staff should be commended for their hard work on the housing implementation plan and especially the very tedious task of going line by line through the current development code. It will take some time for developers and contractors to get used to these new opportunities and place them in their toolbox. Overall, it's a great job and a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. John was the last person to sign up. Would anyone in chambers like to address the council? As part of the hearing? I will now close the public hearing at 6:30 PM. Thank you. Does the council have any questions of staff?
Yeah, I have a question for Ann Catlin. So I was reading the notes that Mr. Sotomayor sent over to us.
Excuse me, councilor, I need to reopen. I was premature. I'll reopen the meeting at 6:30. Go ahead, now, it's all you.
Okay. So I saw the paper that was put on our dais and I just was reviewing it. I saw the changes that he recommended at the end for ADC 3.028, Section 8, and doing the, having low-density residential infill that's compatible with historic character of the district is permitted. And I wanted clarification, so what it was changed for, changed to before, wait, let me make sure, there's so many crosses, I'm making sure I got my, everything together. Okay, so was, the low density is still in there. So, sorry, things were on two different pages and we just saw this right when we got here. So I think the issue that he had was with the single-dwelling unit residential structures to non-residential, that that was removed. Can we, can we talk to that at all or, for that specific district, for the HM?
So typically, a development standard would not be in a purpose statement. And what Cameron is referring to is we've got descriptions of each zone. We call them zone purpose statements. The development standards are sort of in the tables of what uses are allowed, what are the setbacks and all that. And so we were going through, just trying to revise all of the purpose statements to reflect the kinds of uses that are now allowed with middle housing, et cetera, and make sure that there weren't any standards in the code. It is, so we do have uses that are non-residential allowed in the HM zone, and the HM zone for the public is the Hackelman-Montieth zoning district. It includes the historic Hackelman and Montieth districts, but it also goes beyond those historic districts. But some of the uses that are allowed conditionally through a conditional use process include a lot of institutional-type uses. And so I think there's a bigger conversation that needs to happen. Rather than putting this, what sounds like a standard into the development code at this time, we would really need to go through a whole land use process and notify everyone in the HM zone and have a discussion. And council, you'd want to have a discussion, do you want to allow any of the houses to convert to other uses, which we do have law offices, historic homes that are not in single-family dwelling use. So what is the right answer? I don't have that for you. We are fine not removing that sentence, but it's really not a development standard. We do think that there should be some broader discussion, not as part of this package. It needs to be a separate process so that everyone that may be affected by any potential end result is included in that process.
Can I, quick follow-up. So just so I want to understand, so this statement is not something that you guys are typically referencing. And it says in the old statement that the conversion of single-dwelling unit, is that, I'm looking at the red writing and it's crossed out, I'm assuming that it was in there originally. But we have the, you know, businesses that have converted already, correct?
Right. So I didn't have time to research. I think this appeared when this zone was first created and, you know, changes have just been kind of minor over time, if there've been any to the description of the zone. There wasn't any intent to change the outcome of anything in the zone. We were really just trying to make the zone purpose statement be a descriptive and not have specific standards. So this is something that wasn't even on our radar screen until we got these questions. We are happy with council's direction to look at, do you want to consider a standard like that for the houses that are in this zone? That would be a whole separate effort that we have not dived into with this package. So you have a couple of options, remove the sentence and direct city staff to come back and figure out when, when would we be able to evaluate this issue and do the public input process? You can leave the sentence in. I mean, it's up to you. It's not really a development standard. Where it comes into play is for conditional uses, one of the review criteria says that the proposal is consistent with the zoning district purpose statement and the character of the area. So it's, and we don't get conditional uses very often. We rarely would get a conditional use to convert an existing building. Most of the churches and schools and those kinds of things are new construction. So it's just something that's not ever come up, and I've been here for 26 years. It's just, it kind of just threw us a little bit of a curve ball. But it might warrant, we just need your direction on what to do and then we would figure out how to go about that.
Counsel, Counselor Thompson.
Yeah, so just to clarify, so even taking out that sentence wouldn't change the fundamental standard? It wouldn't change any decisions later on, or, you know, it wouldn't direct a decision later on by a planning commissioner?
Correct. What you would probably want to do is look at the uses that are allowed in that zone and should we allow them conditionally or not allow them at all? I mean, that's kind of, it is, isn't as simple as just taking this sentence and moving it over to another location right now. It's a lot more effort and we would want to comply with state noticing laws and all that and make sure that there was an informed conversation around it. Now, there are some efforts of gathering public input around the regulations for the historic overlay district. I mean, maybe that would be a good fit with that project. But, I mean, again, we weren't intending to change anything because these uses are still allowed in the zone. We think it warrants a larger conversation. And it's up to you to let us know whether you want to keep the sentence in or take it out now. But we promise we will add this to the to-do list if that's your direction.
Counselor Montague, do you have anything?
So currently, we only allow non-residential use conditionally. Correct? That's what's in?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, it's mostly the kinds of uses that we allow in almost every single zone, which are religious institutions, educational institutions, then we have community services, which is, it's kind of a more broad.
Okay.
So, so I think we need to, well, what uses are appropriate? Now, when you go through a conditional use process, you're really looking at what's happening in the area. So one location, there may be a lot of churches around there, you know, whatever, and then another location, it may, there may not, it may not fit in. I don't know. I mean, that's part of a staff analysis with that conditional use. But it's a broader conversation that we would recommend have before making any changes to, to move, to make this a standard at this time.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a better conversation to have when you're having the larger conversation about historical districts.
Would it be best to remove it and then come back and discuss it later? I'm trying to think, what is the easiest way?
We are removing.
Well, I'd like to have the councilors getting their input in before we make a decision on direction. So Counselor McLeod?
Thank you. Could you please describe further what the conditional uses are that are permitted? You, you named a couple and then you said there was something that was a little more broad. Can you give some examples of those more broad permitted uses, please?
Well, the community services use category is a lot more broad. It includes shelters, but it could include treatment facilities. So, I mean, there's different impacts to those and the purpose of that land use process is to evaluate any off-site impacts. Every use will have a different off-site impact. And so usually, those uses are not typical in the zone, but with conditions of approval, we can try to mitigate any potential negative or perceived negative off-site impacts. So buffer yards, you know, larger landscaping or something like that. Or in some cases, maybe that use is just not going to fit into the character of the neighborhood. So it's pages, I think, 19 and, where, let's see. Page 19, it starts on page 19 and 20 of the council packet. You've got a list, anywhere where you see what we abbreviate as CU in the Schedule of Permitted Uses. And this is standard in all of our residential zones. I mean, some of these conditional uses, so it might even be a broader conversation beyond the HM zone. It's just being flagged now because we've got this where somewhat of a standard in a purpose statement, so.
Counselor McGee? Counselor Smith?
We've heard from people in North Albany for months and I just wanted to know if anybody wants to discuss the concerns of the North Albany residents related to traffic and just in, new development in general.
Do you want me to talk to that?
Please do.
Yeah. So, so back when North Albany was annexed into the city in 1992, by 1995, the city had adopted a North Albany street plan and that street plan projected growth out to 2020. That growth was a population of around, over 12,000 people, which is about the current population in North Albany. And then when the 2010 TS Transportation Systems Plan was adopted, you know, they looked at the needs and flow of operation of the transportation system. And we're getting ready to start on that very soon and update a new transportation plan. So some of the state laws, I mean, a lot that's large enough can have a fourplex on it. And so right now, what we're trying to do is work with the state staff people in the governor's office, with the League of Oregon Cities. A lot of cities are trying to figure out, the issue seems to be around middle housing and more housing. But our transportation system isn't broken yet. And so the transportation, and I hope I'm not speaking out of line because I'm not in public works, but there will be modeling done of future projected population growth and they will be looking at build-out scenarios for the whole city. And if we were to build out with middle housing being more than just a little bit of infill, unless the laws change, you know, what would those breaking points be and what would the improvements to the system need to be? And then when we collect transportation systems development charges, those funds go to make the improvements that are identified in the transportation systems plan. So we are working on trying to allow for a traffic impact analysis for middle housing over a certain type. I mean, we're doing quite a few things to ensure that we're able to evaluate traffic impacts for middle housing, which seems to be the big concern. There's no proposal to allow any other housing besides single detached and middle housing. And one of the reasons why we are looking at scaled lot size is because developers have come to us, we want to build smaller homes and now we're going to have to build a duplex or a triplex to make it pencil rather than smaller homes. And so it could be that with the proposed changes, we'll see less demand for the middle housing. I mean, I don't know for sure. But the system has planned for this growth and we continue to adjust for growth every 20 years. And so that will be a public process once the data and modeling is done, what the needs are. And we may need to go back and look at the land uses. That could be one of the, one of the outcomes. I don't know if that answered your question, and I'm not leading the transportation systems plan effort, but.
Well, I'm a big fan of updating the transportation system plan, so I'm happy to hear as much as I can. I'm, I'm interested also in hearing from the councilors about if they have any comments about what's going on in North Albany, about exempting them from any of, any changes in the code as, as the Neighborhood Association suggested. I would welcome a discussion on that. Is that possible? Is that legal?
Well, we're trying to apply standards citywide so that nothing happens all in one area, that it, that all vacant land or land that has redevelopment opportunity has an opportunity to provide needed housing, right? So it just so happens, there was one development in North Albany that was large and we don't, we don't agree that middle housing should be this large development. It should be an infill tool. So we're working to try to see if that can be corrected at state law. And I think that would fix the problem. But to not, we can't not allow middle housing in North Albany. It's not possible. I just got a copy of a letter that Senator Gelsor wrote, that they, she provided to the North Albany residents back in November. We didn't ever get a copy of it, but this is specified in state law that, no, we can't do that. What we can do is, anything that isn't mandated by state law, we can, we can look at that. There was another process that was far more complex and time-consuming that the city didn't pursue, given the timelines we had to adopt these regulations. And Mrs. Eldridge alluded to that. But how do you look at distributing middle housing around in each of the zones? 70 or 80% of all the lots have to be eligible. How do you pick which lots? And it's, you know, by census tract and block group. I mean, it's a little bit complicating. So there was an executive decision not to go that route when we were looking at middle housing in the very beginning back in 2001. And this is some, this, one of the things that we've heard from the development community is that small houses don't pencil on 5,000 square foot lots or 6,500 square foot lots. So I've tried to, we don't know where they will be built in North Albany or not, but it's a housing type that a lot of people would like to downsize and downsize within their neighborhood or their community and our market isn't providing that.
Question. Are there other alternatives besides not doing it over there? You said we, we cannot not do that. What other alternatives are there? Are there any alternatives?
Well, so, I mean, you could decide not to allow smaller houses in North Albany because that's not a middle housing standard. You could say, you know, in North Albany, in the R-10 zone, we're gonna, I mean, you could still have smaller houses, but you still have to have large lots. You can decide not to do that. I mean, you might want to wait and see if there is a traffic concern. What may end up happening if you do that is that some of those larger lots will become a fourplex or a triplex or townhomes because those lots, if they're large enough, are eligible for these middle housing types. So, I mean, we don't know, at least some of the, I mean, we, down in South Albany, they wanted to do smaller houses and like, could you please allow detached duplexes? We're like, nope, not going to do it. Duplexes, two units on one lot, because they wanted to build a smaller, so. So, you know, and the cottage cluster just wasn't working for them. I mean, to allow those homeownership opportunities. The market sells a detached product for sale. And I think that's what people would like to build. So you can do that. I mean, if you want to do that, we're, we're fine with that. We're just trying to apply everything across the board. There are some other zones in North Albany that's not R-10. But, I mean, you've got everyone else in the city that might be feeling the same way that's not here tonight.
I agree. I just wanted to, wanted it to be heard that there are other options. Because there are, I agree that I think we should infill and do it all over if that's what it's going to be. But I wanted it to be said that what the other alternative would be.
Yeah, so right now, we're proposing the reduced lot sizes in all of the residential zones. It's not just in there in Benton County. It's across the board. So what I personally think, based on the information I've received from builders, is that if you want a 1,200 square foot house, we, we need like a 3,000 or smaller lot size. And that isn't necessarily going to be the scaled lot sizes in North Albany. I mean, but we don't know, you know, what.
I just, one final thing. I think one of the problems is that it's, it can be hard to accept that North Albany is part of Albany. And Albany has standards that apply no matter what your address is. That's, that's been hard. My husband lived in North Albany before it was annexed. And it was the country. And soon it wasn't. We went out to look for the Aurora Borealis last summer and couldn't find a place with, without ambient light or trees. There were trees there that weren't there a long time ago. And we, we got lost because we didn't recognize it in the dark, because it is very different. But it's still, it's part of Albany. It's a special part of Albany. And I, I wish the people in North Albany felt like they belonged with the rest of us.
Thank you for that. I, I, go ahead. Go ahead.
I have two comments on the North Albany discussion. And I have two additional questions for Ann, just for clarification. So I went to the meeting with the North Albany Neighborhood Association, hosted here in City Hall. I guess that's the other room. And a large issue that I heard, you know, was, you know, they feel, feel like they do feel disconnected. And something that I spoke with other, with some people that attended was that we finally just got some of the roads signed over, over to us. They're no longer county roads because they feel like they're really car-dependent because there isn't sidewalks, there isn't, you know, bike lanes. The buses aren't going up there. So I know that you mentioned the transportation plan, they're going to be assessing that. I think that that will be good to maybe help that part of our community feel more connected. And then I know in a letter we got from a constituent that's up in North Albany, I believe it was in our packet. I'm spacing on their name. They mentioned a concern for public safety with the bridge with additional density. And I do know that we have a fire department stationed up there. Do you know anything about, you know, do we have certain police vehicles for certain response time? Because they're, they're thinking that like with increased density, if any issues happen, that's just a concern I wanted to bring up.
Yeah, I can't respond to, you know, police. There is a fire station there. I know that, I mean, other communities have some satellite offices or share space, you know, whether the police, I mean, the example of Coastal Farms having a presence out in East Albany where there are more concerns by Walmart, for example. But we do, so when we plan and facility plans are done by other departments, they look at population growth and they consult with planning staff to find out, well, what is the population growth going to be? And sometimes ask where is that going to be so that they can do their planning? So these code changes are not really necessarily going to change the outcome of the numbers of people that are going to live anywhere in the city. Because they're being applied broadly across the city, it isn't going to make one area get more population than another. We look at the base zoning and we do an analysis when we look at our buildable lands and we try to project, you know, which transportation zone people are going to be in over the next 20 years. We'll, we'll do a crystal ball. But we also look at build-outs so that we're planning ahead for build-out for all the facility plans and, yeah.
So I just wanted to talk about the people I serve, not in this chair, but in my business. I have roughly, in the Willamette Valley, 1,700 clients that are older that have paid off homes or a lot of equity. The biggest issue they're having is, is that I have this, you know, 2,000 square foot home. My partner, my spouse is gone and I need a small place to live in because I don't want to go to an assisted or independent living facility or community. So I'm in favor of smaller homes. I, I think a lot of my clients would not leave Albany if they had a smaller place to move into. And I'm running hard towards 60 in June. And I'm thinking about the same conversation right now. You know, so I'm, I'm in favor of smaller homes. I think that younger couples, young families, single income folks with good jobs would be able to buy a smaller home. Because right now, the market is ridiculous. It's terrible. A house in my neighborhood, smaller than my house by a thousand, about 400 square feet, sold for $459. I bought my house 20 years ago for $159. So I think that increasing the inventory of smaller homes will be more affordable for these younger couples. And we just have to get the interest rates down and then build a smaller home. The more we build, the more people can, can cash out of the big home, move to a smaller home. And somebody can fill that bigger home. So I'm in favor of changes and I'm in favor of middle housing. We need to do it smartly. We need to do it effectively. But we also need to be transparent with the community. And I think this is a good first step. And I appreciate what Mr. Robinson said because we cannot not build. Because I have clients that tell me, my grandkids cannot live here or my children cannot live here. We need to build homes. And so I appreciate the work you guys are doing. And go ahead, please.
Well, I, I think we want to close, if there are questions related to public testimony that I can respond to and then, you know, questions for me. And then you guys can discuss, just so that we're following the meeting procedures.
So last one here and we'll close the public hearing.
Okay, I had my, my two other questions. I apologize. I should have jumped right into those. So at the beginning of the public, Robert Harvard, he shared, and I wanted to get some clarification. I don't feel like this is legal. He asked if we could have a condition of the sale of city property be restricted only to residents of Albany. Can, I believe that's not legal.
That was, yeah, that was the first speaker.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I.
I don't think that is part of the packet.
Yeah, it's not part of the packet. None of the policy amendments are part of this packet. You did have a first reading on ordinances for, and you did adopt a property surplus property resolution. So these are just development code-related amendments.
I think that should have been part of the public. It should have been business from the public.
Okay, and then, wonderful. And then my other question is to seek clarification from what Ms. Natalie Janney from Multitec Engineering. She mentioned that with the pocket parks, this would potentially cause HOAs throughout the city. I would hate for Albany to become one big HOA.
Well, so right now, my understanding is because we have to require stormwater quality facilities that are quite large and they require, somebody has to maintain those, that homeowners associations are now having to be created because of that requirement. We wouldn't have considered this requirement if there wasn't already a requirement to probably have an HOA to maintain those. I think we tried to find a modest amount. We're trying to allow stormwater quality facilities to count towards a portion of that open space. This is just something we wanted to respond to concerns within the community. It's up to you whether you want to implement this. We do want neighborhoods to be livable. And, you know, we don't want to just have houses built, but we want them to be livable. And I do think that, you know, our park system is fabulous, but in some areas, you have to get in your car to, to get to those.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Bailey, Public Works Director. Just a gentle correction. Stormwater quality facilities are not always required for these land divisions. Sometimes they are and sometimes they aren't. And there are also agreements whereby the lot for stormwater is transferred to the city and becomes a public facility. But so in these really small little subdivisions, I'm not necessarily sure that that would be accurate. But where there are stormwater quality facilities required, they often do form an HOA in order to provide maintenance for those facilities. It really just depends on the development. So the pocket park thing, I don't have any outside of my area. So I have no comments on that. But yeah, as the neighborhoods become more complex, generally the, the way you fund and take care of those things also becomes more complex. That is a valid statement. Thanks.
Chris, can I just ask you a question? For a development of 20 or more lots, I mean, would it depend on the scale? Because we're really looking at this applying to what we feel would be a larger neighborhood and not smaller developments that our local builders do.
We probably need like a whole of engineering up here. I'm not sure. I, I think it really just depends on the layout of the neighborhood. And oftentimes, the stormwater quality requirements are met through roadside planters and swales. So it just really depends. Definitely as the neighborhood gets larger and the impervious area gets larger, it does have a greater stormwater impact. So it could be a, could be a consideration for sure.
Okay.
Oh, here comes Matthew.
Can you put, put another chair up there, please, somebody?
I promise I won't be here that long. In, in response to the, the question about CCNRs and when like the subdivision over like 20. So the, the trigger for requirement for HOA is really, as, as Chris Bailey indicated, is, is dependent on, a lot of times they'll have open space tracks, things like that, that, that generally will have an HOA associated for the maintenance on that. For the stormwater quality, for the stormwater facilities, if stormwater quality is provided in a detention pond for any residential or stormwater quality, if it's not in the public right of way, if it's provided for on a separate track, then those, those facilities are required to be dedicated to the city so that we can maintain them. That's, you see a lot of that. A good example would be going up Crocker, newer development that was done a couple of years ago. Very large detention pond out there that also has a treatment cell for stormwater quality. That, that lot or that land was required to be dedicated to the city as we take ownership of that. The, the change in ownership and for stormwater quality facilities on commercial facilities, that's not always the case. Stormwater quality is maintained by the, the private property owner. But we have like a, a maintenance agreement that we can actually enforce that they are maintaining those facilities. Hopefully that helps answer a question.
Yeah, all right. Good to go? Okay, thank you. I do declare the meeting, public hearing closed at 7:01 PM. Does the city council wish to discuss the amendments? Any further? Counselor?
Yeah, I do. I, I didn't really have questions per se, but just taken in total, these, these amendments are, are a significant regulatory change to our neighborhoods. And that's all we've been talking about is the regulation side of, of housing. Though, though I'm not surprised, when we ever have a housing issue, we, we're eventually going to talk about the financing side of, the economic side of housing. Housing is a market. And boy, if I wanted to create housing, I would first lower interest rates. These regulatory changes are going to bring more density at almost every, more density at the highest level and more density at the lowest level throughout the city. And I don't think there's a guarantee. It makes perfect sense that changing this type of zoning, changing these regulations would create housing. But, you know, this all started in 2019. Maybe we haven't given the state enough time. But, but there have been articles that the kind of targets put out by the state of Oregon as they began middle housing and other efforts, the targets, they haven't met those targets. And the biggest reason has been interest rates, high interest rates and overall reluctance from investors. And this, the entire state of Oregon's population has kind of flattened during that time. So they're not hitting the, the targeted amounts. And like I said, maybe it's just too early. I, I don't know. But what I'm saying is these changes are long-lasting and a change to your neighborhood could be significant while the overall idea of more housing doesn't materialize. That is my concern. And, and my concern is also with these changes and increased density. No discussion, no, no real thought about how we pay for traffic. Traffic's plan, no, it's not broken, but ask anybody, and not just Orton, Albany, in many places in Albany, it's, it's not, it's not working. And traffic, water sewer, and then schools, schools are the last. All these changes, all this density happens and schools play catch-up, if ever. So just the cost and the changes make me wary of, of this, this proposal.
Counselor McLeod, may I ask you?
So there's a lot of things that we don't have control over. This is an example of things that we do have control over. I do agree that, you know, builders are going to build. And if we don't give options, then we're stuck with just a lot more apartments. If we don't give options for smaller houses, I think that we need to have options for the builders in Albany. They're going to build. We need the housing. So giving this as an option, I think, can help. So I'm, I'm, I appreciate the time and effort to give, give the community more housing options. And I know that was a lot of work. So I just want to give you guys some appreciation for that, too.
Counselor Smith? So are you going to?
Yeah, if there's, if there's no further discussion.
I'm going to make one, one more statement.
Okay.
So as Counselor Manna, you said, I, I think I've always been a proponent of multiple types of housing, hopefully for all entry points into our community. We want big homes for people with money. We want medium-sized homes for people with middle money. And we need low-income housing at some scale. And so I'm for the amendments and I'm hoping that we do have a further discussion with the, the points we talked about. Hope so, for my turn. So I do hope we have a further discussion about that one point that Counselor Newton Azar brought up earlier. But I'm, I'm for this change. And I think Counselor Smith has something. There is a record, there's an ordinance in your consideration on page five and six of the council packet.
I'm prepared to make a motion. I move that the city council adopt the ordinance with the correction to Exhibit A, page three dash two four, to amend the Albany Development Code as detailed in Ordinance Exhibit A and amend the Albany Comprehensive Plan as described in Ordinance Exhibit B and further described in the staff report findings and conclusions included as Ordinance Exhibit C for planning files DC dash zero four dash two four and CP dash zero two dash two four. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the Ordinance Exhibit C and findings in support of the decision made by the city council during deliberations on this matter.
Well, that was really well done. Didn't the city attorney have to?
Oh, yeah, I have a motion second.
Got it. Second.
There's a recommendation to read the council, will the city attorney read the council, read the ordinance in title only, first time?
Ms. Mayor, in her debut appearance as our acting city attorney, I wanted to introduce Deputy City Attorney Aiden Harris.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. An ordinance amending the Albany Development Code, which was adopted by Ordinance Number 4441, and amending the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted by Ordinance Number 4836, and adopting findings.
Would the council like to read the, make a motion to read the ordinance a second time, title only?
I move for read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second.
There's, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no? Thank you. We'll be bringing it back. Thank you. Next on the council agenda, we actually, you know what? I'm going to put a five-minute bio break, so we're going to break for five minutes. Actually, make it 10 because there's a lot of people here. See you at 7:18.
And to councillors and for councillors to listen. The council won't discuss topics or make decisions during business from the public, but will take comments and requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council's rules and observe the same standards in decorum. If you're unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience for the rest of the meeting. When you get to the microphone, please give your name and state whether or not you live in the city of Albany, Oregon. Do we have a list? I imagine there's a lot of people on, there's a lot of people here. First up is Drew Chaley?
Charlie.
Charlie, I'm sorry.
I'll try to speak fast, but I clock this at 3 minutes and 20 seconds, so if you can bear with me. I'm Drew Charlie, I live in Albany. So, I'm here today again on behalf of Russell and Tisha Williams regarding their petition for an easement through Lot 2451 Violet Avenue to access their landlocked property which is in North Albany. You may recall the workshop meeting in December where the issue of granting an easement through this publicly owned property was discussed. Mr. Mayor, I don't believe you were here for that. At that time, I had requested to be included on the agenda to present our case fully. Unfortunately, I was restricted to speaking only during this section where I have obviously a limited time and I wasn't able to speak to the council directly in response. At the previous meeting, the council denied the movement as requested by the city staff who cited the need for additional materials such as wetland delineations and building plans. However, I want to make it clear that these requirements are not only financially burdensome, but entirely unnecessary at this stage. The petition is about access, not development. The Williams' legal right to access their property is guaranteed under Oregon law, specifically O R S 376 dot 180 and 185, which state that landlocked properties must be granted access through the least burdensome route, requiring costly delineations and development plans prior to granting access creates an unreasonable financial barrier which violates the intent of these statutes. Our proposed route through Lot 2451 is the least burdensome solution as required by this statute. It utilizes existing infrastructure that the city already uses and no new construction or environmental impact would be needed to provide immediate access. Given the complexity of this issue and its direct impact on the Williams' property rights, it seems only fair to allow reasonable representation to address these matters fully. However, when I requested to be added to the agenda again for this meeting, my request was consistently denied. This leaves the Williams with no access to their property, unrealized property value, financial obstacles unrelated to granting access, and no meaningful way to present their case to this council. I want to emphasize that denying this issue of inclusion on the agenda while relying on procedural formalities has suppressed important information from the council. This limits the council's ability to make a fully informed decision on a matter that directly impacts property rights. The council has a responsibility to ensure fair and transparent governance, especially in cases like this where fundamental rights are at stake. It is only fair that both sides of this issue are heard in full. I also want to acknowledge the city's concerns about the stormwater infrastructure. However, the existing gravel road has been deemed sufficient for the city's use.
Thank you, sir. I would ask you to get, can you send that information to the city clerk so he can get it to us so we can read it fully? And I'll ask our city development department to reach out to you about that.
Okay, I do have a presentation which I was hoping could be added to the agenda for...
If you could just send that in to us, we'd greatly appreciate it.
Okay, great, thank you.
I think Matthew's coming your direction. Oh, he's running out the back door. Audrey Eldridge again?
Yes, thank you. Audrey Eldridge, and I still live in Albany. And I am here because I'd like to thank the city staff, including Anne Kaplan, Matthew Rutgers, and Liz Olmsted, and the others who met with people from North Albany last week. We had about 40 people at that meeting, and they took time, and they did a lot of preparation, and they really wanted to share what was going on with the proposed code and plan changes. They were able to provide some clarification on the planning and the development process and how it works, especially with regards to middle housing. And I want you to know that while we may not all agree on all of the outcomes, we did want to recognize that it was very important for what they did for the people in North Albany, and they are true professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Dennis?
Hello, everyone, I'm Brad Dennis. I live in Albany. I'm also the Chair of the North Albany Neighborhood Association. I wanted to bring to your attention tonight some state laws that have been introduced. As you're probably aware, the legislature's in session. I have glanced through all 2,500 bills, and I've pulled out about 200 that I'm following. And I've given to the clerk a list of about eight or nine that pertain to housing. And I want to make sure that the city is aware of all of these bills pertaining to housing. For example, House Bill 2138 is probably the most important. It's a follow-up on the earlier House Bill 2001 that stripped the authority from the city of Albany to do their own zoning and took it to the state level. So there's a further intent to take control of the zoning by the state, and this is House Bill 2138. I've read through the bill, I'm not sure I understand all of it. It appears to allow for denials when sufficient urban services are not in place, and they define urban services as sanitary sewers, water, fire protection, parks, streets, roads, and mass transit. And of course, we've had discussions in the past about water, streets, and mass transit in North Albany. In the rulemaking section of that bill, it also requires L C D C to adopt rules that repeal requirements for demolition review for houses listed in the National Register of Historic Places. So if I was a developer, I'd be eyeing houses in the Montith district with plans to tear some of them down and build townhouses or Plex units in their place. Now, it may be that I've misread this law, and so I'm wondering if the city, probably Mr. Rutgers, could take a look at these bills that have been introduced and give a report back to the council and to the public on what's the impact of these bills. None of them have had hearing yet in Salem, they're all coming up. One of the bills, just I'll mention it, I'm running out of time, would prohibit the city of Albany for conditioning development of property based on the retention of trees. So, the state says, "Cut the trees, build houses," that's Senate Bill 616. So, there are several others in here. Also, there's a bill, and I've given a copy to the clerk, Senate Bill 564, that's specifically granting money to ODOT to improve Highway 20 from downtown Corvallis to the city of Philomath. And I've asked our state representatives and senators, "Where is the money for Highway 20 from the Willamette River to Scenic Drive?" I got it in, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your email today. Next, adoption of the consent calendar, council. Say again? Yep. Oh, let me ask to see, does anybody in-house would like to speak, in the chambers would like to speak to us? Open the floor up, three minutes. Please. I don't see it. Jamie, your name's not on here.
It's right here.
Where? Oh, it's typed in. Glasses, come on in, please. Thanks, Jamie.
Good evening, Governor, Mayor, and council folks. I appreciate your time. Good evening, Jamie Smith, 1112 37th Avenue Southwest. I am following up and finishing from seeing you last council meeting. To go ahead and rephrase the beginning, talked about maximizing waste system for pump station and managed growth. These were two items covered. As I go ahead and pick up at the end of what I had written, our population of the city of Albany is approximately 60,000. We have a daily transient population of that which doubles due to I-5 freeway and Highway 34. Albany Fire Department serves its transient community 24/7. Fire stations and police substations need to grow to accomplish the necessary response time for the community and for the insurance ratings. I had a chance to listen tonight to some other components that I'll add comments to. It will not be right away, I heard earlier at some other meetings. This growth will happen. We go ahead and build roads, they will come. We build homes, they will come. They will come quicker than we think. The streets, I know that we have our set way of building streets, and it's all pre-described. With what I heard tonight, they're gonna skinny up. And for us to be able to park the bigger vehicles that are happening within the industry, for us to go ahead and have emergency vehicles respond, it's gonna be limiting to congested at best. As far as, the numbers never lie. I'm not here spouting off numbers to you to support my point today, but rather to show that I'm competent, concerned about our population growth and how we as a city are proceeding. I gave a packet, submitted that, and I hope some of you had a chance to review that. There was other numbers and some other statistics in there. Managed growth, please. The only discussion on this H I P has been development of property, taxation, building permits, not a word about the impact of so many things of proposed growth. I believe councilwoman over here had made statement to different things with transit, including that police-fire-public works, having to have sub areas to work. It's gonna be demanding. And there's no plan that is part of this H I P from the state, and there's no funding stream that I can see. So, with that, I appreciate, and I'd like to end with a little science. Heat transfer of energy, radiant convection, conduction. You put houses next to each other, house will burn, the next one will burn for sure. Right now, they can mitigate that. That's gonna be an issue. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. So your report did come in? I didn't see it.
The report was last...
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Meeting, yeah. And I have been in communication with both councilwomen, and so I look forward to meeting with them so we can broaden the conversation.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is adoption of the consent calendar.
Move adoption of the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Next is staff presentation, public safety levy overview by Director Jaeger and Fire Chief LaBelle and Chief Marsha Harden. Pages 193 to 205 in your packet.
Okay, good evening. So tonight, we just wanted to present to you some information about the public safety levy that we would like to go out for in May. The first levy was in 2002. It was a 95 cent per thousand of assessed value. In 2012, we increased that to $1.15 per thousand of assessed value. Since our latest one was in May of 2020, the constituents of Albany voted, and that one will end in 2026. We tend to go out for these about a year early, just in case we need to put it on the ballot a couple of times. So the levy provides approximately 10% of the general fund. Not having these funds would have a big impact on our departments. It could potentially have an economic impact, it could result in layoffs. And so, we're gonna look at the numbers, and then the chiefs are gonna talk about how these funds have impacted their departments. Okay, so the actual revenues that we've received in the last four years, and then what we're scheduled to receive this current year. These are in the 24, 25 year, that's the amount that is imposed by the counties. It includes compression and discounts and everything. It's what they say we should be getting. One of the things that I wanted to note too is that the two departments split these funds equally. They each get 50% of those monies. We're estimating revenues to be, we're basing it on the current year, and then we're doing a 3% year-over-year increase. These are really good funds to have. They tend to be fairly consistent. However, as some of you may remember, compression can play an ugly role in the revenues that we get. And they're gonna hit the public option levies first. I don't know if anybody knows what compression is. So, here in Oregon, we have measures 5 and 50 that have impacted our property tax revenues. So Measure 5 caps property taxes at $10 per thousand of real market value. Not assessed value, but real market value. So basically, it's almost like if you had a pie, and it's limited to this $10 per 1,000. As new districts come in, or new local option levies come in, you can still only get that $10 per thousand. So if you get some that come in, if you have, for example, we have, you know, 6, can't remember the exact number, 6%. And let's say Lynn County has 2%, and we have our option levy which is 1.15. And then somebody else has a local option levy, Lynn County. It could be maybe an organization like the YMCA, not the YMCA, the 4-H comes in and has that. If it comes to over $10, it gets cut off. It's called, that's considered compression. So, and the other things, so the new taxes or levies from other jurisdictions can affect that. But also, if there's a drop in real market value in homes, that can affect it too, because this one is based on real market value. And then, the estimated cost per property. So again, this is based on assessed value. This is Measure 50. It bases our property taxes on assessed value. They can only grow 3% each year, and, which is very different from real market value. I looked up a house in Albany recently. It has an assessed value of $335,000, but its real market value is $578,000. So there is a big difference between those two. Here, I just have a list of what some of those potential levy amounts would be for a year, and just chose the homes that are assessed at $200,000 to $600,000. It would just be 1.15 times the value of the assessed value. You know, when you're looking at this and you wanna know what your assessed value is, you're gonna wanna go out to the county assessors' websites. Don't trust Zillow, don't trust Redfin. They don't have your assessed values out there. They have estimated real market values, but you're really gonna wanna go to the assessor's office to see what that could be. And I am going to turn this over to Chief LaBelle.
You can just keep it, I can just see right here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Some of this I mentioned in my department presentation, but I think it's important to go over it again. So, the levy accounts for 10% of our budget, which equates to 16 firefighter positions. You may ask, if this funding was to go away, is there other places you could cut besides firefighter positions? Really, the answer is no. 85% of our F T E are emergency services, folks. Boots on the ground, responding in the community for calls for service. Also, what I shared with you, the org chart, there's not a lot of fluff there. Really, it is, our management team has been the same size since 1999. I talked about previous cuts to our prevention division, so they're about at 50%. We have a trading division of one. So really, there's just no other place to cut but firefighter positions, unfortunately. The only other thing that is funded from the fire department out of the levy besides all those personnel costs is our dispatch software. So this is, we did an upgrade, police and fire several years ago, and then we are paying a portion of that back. Fiscal year '27, we'll be done with that, but the fire department pays about $33,000 a year to pay back for that. What does that mean for our service levels? So, losing 16 positions is reducing five firefighter E M Ts per shift. So what that equates to is taking an ambulance off the road and taking a fire agent off the road. Our daily staffing right now is 21 firefighters per day. If we were to lose those positions, we would go to 16 firefighters a day. That takes us back to the early 2000s before we even put the public safety levy into place. So currently, with 21 on duty, we run just under 12,000 calls. When we had 16 on duty previously in 2000, we were running 4,300 calls. So you can only imagine if we were to reduce our staffing to 16 and trying to run the current 12,000 calls a year for service at the current rate, not even to account for growth increase for calls for service. So, this is absolutely crucial to our staffing levels and our mission to prevent, protect from harm. And I will turn it over to Chief Harden.
All right, we'll go through this as well, and some visuals on the impacts of our levy. We have 99.25 employees. The levy currently pays for 15 of our employees. It's a huge impact on our staffing levels. And our, 91% of that levy money goes to paying for these positions, which are the three police officer, four committee resource officers or service officers, they're the ones that do our livability type issues within the city, three communication specialists or dispatchers, the crime analyst who looks on a daily basis at the crime in the city and allows us to allocate resources around that, one police clerk, the two police lieutenants, and again, we have two lieutenants oversee all of our operations in patrol. It covers the .5 of the park service officer that is shared with the parks department, and then .5 of our I T specialist that works within the police department. Next. All of these positions obviously impact everything that we do to try to combat crime in the city. We have a city strategic goal of a safe city. We wanna keep our violent crime rate low for a city of 60,000, as well as our property crime, livability, traffic enforcement, and community outreach. So this is where this shows up. It shows up in our special events, in our hiring, and the like. We are well behind the national average for police officers per population, and levy helps us try to keep up with that, but we're still well behind in that, helps fulfill those jobs. And again, all of the, really the special events would take the biggest hit, and our community resource unit, which is our school resource officers, and all of the outreach that we do to build community legitimacy and trust. Again, more. The levy does not pay for Bentley, but those employees use Bentley quite a bit. As you know, he's a staple in our agency. So these are all examples of how that levy is put to work. More. This is just a very small snapshot of all of the special events and programs that we do that we would not be able to continue if we didn't have the positions funded by the levy. And some of the things that we have been able to put together, we've talked before about the Situation Table, which is a consortium of community partners to come together for high-needs residents, and everything from the Department of, or DHS, child welfare, our deflection partners, things like that, to try to assist citizens. Our involvement in Special Olympics, our assignment with GAPS, and all of the extra projects we take on to try to support our community and our first responders, as well as the staff needed to take care of our very large community events, the Veterans Day parade, Art and Air Festival, et cetera. All of these are covered by positions that are currently funded by the levy. And I can answer any questions, and I'm sure these two as well.
Counselor Monagui has a question.
So we heard that the levy pays for 10% of fires budget. How, what percent of the levy pays for, like...
I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it's, on a yearly basis, it's 15% of those staff that we have to pay for, which is about 90% of our operating budget overall. About 88 to 90% of our general fund dollars outside the levy go towards personnel costs. Same applies here. So that would, it would basically equal probably the same as the fire department, but for me, it's 15% of my staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other councillors? Counselor McLeod?
Can you please give that pie example again? There was something that seemed like wasn't tracking, and I just wanted to have that clarified, please.
So there is only a certain amount of property taxes that can be charged per real market value of your home, and that's $10 per 1,000. So what happens is, if somebody comes along, another jurisdiction, let's say, let's say they wanna put a new local option levy out there for $3, okay, per thousand of assessed value. And we're currently at, let's say, $9 already. And so, it would be, that would then be 12, right? It cuts off those two. So then everybody's budgets get affected. And the first one that gets affected is the public, is the local option levies. Those are the first ones. And then you start seeing it happen, you know, affect your permanent rates and things like that.
Gina, does it actually get cut off, or does it get compressed, thereby affecting all of those rates?
Right, yeah. So no, it gets, it gets cut off. It gets limited to that 10. So everybody's, so that is what is considered compression. It compresses it down to that $10 per 1,000 of assessed value.
So if your public safety levy is $1.15, you may only get $1.10 or $1.11 out of it, because it's compressed?
Yeah, and again, the local option levies are the ones that get hit first. Back when I first started, we had some really, there was really big compression that was hitting our local option levy. Since then, real market value have gone up, and so that's allowed us to collect more revenues. But honestly, that's one of the big ones too, is if we went into some sort of a recession where real market values are dropping, you will again see compression becoming a bigger and bigger issue.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Counselor McGee had something, then Counselor Smith.
Is there a reason why the public safety levies get cut first? Did you say they tend to go first?
I'm not really sure why, honestly. I think it's because they are a secondary levy, but I can, I can check into that and get back to you on that.
Yeah, that'd be, I wanna know that.
Sure, I'd absolutely be happy to do that for you.
Counselor Monagui, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Newton Azar?
I had a question.
Counselor Smith has a question.
Oh, sorry.
This, when does the council need to make a decision to put this on the levy, and what happens after that?
Thank you, I was actually going to talk about that. So staff is recommending that we don't increase the public safety levy, partly because of those reasons we discussed with compression. There are other funding sources that we need to be looking at. We are gonna be bringing this back to council at the February 12th meeting, I believe, for discussion, or 10th, 10th? On the 12th. To discuss the ballot title. Once that ballot title is determined and council... Once that ballot title is determined and council votes on this, then staff can no longer discuss it. We, we have to be quiet. Council, however, can go out there and, you know, try to talk to citizens about voting for it.
Okay. So it says a resolution on here. Do we need to pass this resolution?
There shouldn't be a resolution.
That's just public information. That's just pages, okay. So staff will have to bring it back on the 12th? We can talk about it? Good? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
And would you guys be, would you, I'll be open to counselors coming to you to get more clarity? Because I've been to this budget paying training, I don't know how many times. So I know some of the counselors haven't been as many times as I have around this house.
Absolutely.
I think you are, so let me get my book over here. Adoption of a resolution, intergovernmental agreement with Solum, Kaiser Public Schools, 24J, Fire Chief LaBelle, pages 206 to 224 in your packet.
Yep, so I'll keep this brief. The request is Stephen Egan to enter an IGA with Salem Kaiser Public Schools. West Salem High School has an emergency services program for their high school kids, where they have a fire agent, they trade, they do all kinds of different things. What they need is departments around the area that they could come observe. And basically, they, they get the training and then they get to see it real world. It's observationally, there's no hands-on, anything like that. They follow all of our protocols for any other right-of-long that we have. They go through background check, side confidentiality, hold harmless, and all those types of things. So I, as I had also mentioned, recruiting is a challenge for our department, like all the other departments in the city. And so this is a great opportunity to, hopefully, these kids go on to college and continue that career path. And we've made a good impression on them for the city of Albany, as well as the Albany Fire Department. So it's a win-win for everybody. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for the fire chief?
They're doing stuff with their own fire department as well. Yeah, okay, cool. That's awesome.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Salem Kaiser Public Schools 24J. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, fire chief. Next on the agenda is grant application, TGM Quick Response Program Assistance Grant. Director Rutgers, page 225 to 228 in your packet.
Good evening, American counselors, again. So I will also be brief tonight. I'll see if I can beat the chief's program. So I'm here tonight to talk about a grant application opportunities that the city has with the Quick Response Program, or QRP. The QRP is actually handled through a partnership between ODOT, so Oregon Department of Transportation, and the Department of Land Conservation and Development, or DLCD, as you'll hear us talk about in our alphabet soup that we have. It's actually a transportation growth management program that utilizes this, this QRP, or Quick Response Program. And what it does is provide an opportunity for the city to make application. And the grant is not in the form of money. We don't receive dollars. We actually receive consultants or consultant support. And in this particular case, the QRP would be brought in in association with a project that's being titled as the East Albany Town Center. I have attached on page 227 in your package, just kind of the general area located just kind of west of Walmart, some property that's been out there and vacant for a very long time. By bringing the QRP in, and we've actually have some of the development team or consulting team here, you might recognize them in the audience. Darren and Liz are here, if you had any questions for them. But this, this first step of applying for the grant, if successful, and all indications say that we will be, would bring in a consultant team to help develop concepts of what this project could look like, and also help us with public engagement as we start to build kind of support, answer questions of the community. All of this would be in support of our East Albany plan that the council adopted back in 2023. So this is kind of a first step. I know one of the questions that we ask a lot is, well, you're applying for the grant, is there, is there a match involved? The only match involved for the city on this would be with staff time. So we'd be expected to be working with their consultants, as well as a development team, as we explore concepts. They also require, for grant application, a resolution, which I've attached on page 228. In that resolution, the purpose of it is just acknowledging that we've, we've talked to our council. They're generally in support of supplying for the grant, obviously, because there's nothing worse than doing the work for, to get a grant and then find out that your elected officials didn't want to support that. So that's one of the things, a lot of grant opportunities you'll see, is they require a resolution from our council. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counselor Montague? Counselor Smith?
I was contacted by Ms. Irish a couple of weeks ago, wanting to talk about the project. And I didn't, I was reluctant to respond because it's a land use issue. It will be eventually. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, that I am trying to prevent any kind of prejudicial, ex parte contact. I, I like the idea, but I'm just trying to stay clean, so.
I was also contacted, too, so Ms. Irish did her due diligence.
As was I. And I did not meet with her.
Same, Mary did not meet.
I, I can just very quickly kind of address and maybe alleviate some of those concerns. As we, as we move through this kind of, if we move forward with the QRP project, you know, we'll be looking at eventually developing a development agreement, which, as a council, you'll be, would be looking at and approving. So there's, there's going to be portions where you're, you will be, have knowledge of the project. And we'll be disclosing that as we have our discussions. It will come to you through, if it moves forward. Could come to you, or would come to you through the annexation process. But there's, we can work with city attorney's office and just making sure that we're clear on those communications, obviously, that we're not developing a bias in the criteria, especially in that annexation process are very clear and objective, so that, that development of bias is, is a little bit alleviated to, to help with some of your concerns. But I appreciate you guys being very sensitive to that, because it does come up.
So I'll be full transparent. Liz, Ms. Irish is a 12-year friend of mine. And I'm also part of their family, as far as insurance and other things. So just so we're clear, we've had conversations. Okay, counsel.
I move, we approve the resolution in support of a grant application to the state of Oregon's Transportation and Growth Management Program for utilization of their Quick Response Program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, mayor.
Proceed. Next is water rate resolution correction. Robert Emmons and Director Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. So last, I'll make this brief as well. So last spring, council approved a 4% water rate increase. That rate resolution contained an error that we discovered when that rate resolution went into effect on January 1st. So attached to the council packet is a corrected rate resolution, and the corrected numbers there are shown in highlighted yellow. It's basically the, the consumption rate for residential and multifamily, if I remember correctly, those, those two rates. So those are corrected in the attached resolution. And we request that council consider that for adoption.
Not having it in front of me, it's, the, the rate is still 4%. The increase is still 4%, but the numbers are different.
Correct, correct.
Seven, yeah, six or seven cents. Counsel, any other discussion? Any other questions, discussion? I have a motion.
I move, we approve a resolution setting rates for water use and repealing resolution number 7323.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Next, staff report, number item 8, septic repair, 2705 Park Terrace Southwest. Aaron Hemstra, pages 234 to 236 in your packet. Evening, Aaron.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. I am here about a one-time exception to the Albany municipal code for requiring a public sewer extension. So some background, a couple of months ago, we were contacted by a property owner's agent about failing septic property on Park Terrace. So back then, we told them municipal code requires that you have to do a sewer extension because your property is within 300 feet of the public sewer. Fast forward to a few weeks ago, we were contacted again, provided a little bit more information, and staff met and took a closer look at what would happen with the extension. If you look on page 236, there's an exhibit map. So we looked at the depths of the sewer, the feasibility of the extension, and what it looks like for the entire area. So if you look at the map, the sewer extension would be about 650 feet, which would mean that sewer would be maxed out depth-wise. It wouldn't be able to extend any further, which leaves properties in the area outside of being able to hook up the city sewer. So based on what's out there and the depths of only one sewer basically being able to be extended, we felt like it wasn't currently timely for the sewer to be extended at this time, and that we kind of needed to dig in and see how to serve everybody in this area first. So luckily, we are planning on doing a master plan update in the first year of the next biennium. So this one-time exception is just to be able to buy time for us to be able to do a basin study in this area, to be able to look and see how to properly serve everybody in this area. The other thing, so staff recommends by motion to do a one-time exception. And because of the whole basin, we don't think this would set a precedence of other properties, because we do make other properties have to extend when it's feasible. This one, we don't think is feasible, especially if we turn out with the basin study, this is all throwaway sewer, because it needs to come from a different direction or something, and would be very costly to the homeowners in order to do that. Typically, when we have exceptions to the extensions for public infrastructure, we acquire petition and waiver of remonstrance, which is basically a form that says, when the city decides to form an LID, the property would vote in favor of the local improvement district so that they participate. So I think that's all I have, unless counsel has any questions.
Do you have any questions for Aaron?
The precedence was the only question I had, but you answered that. Thanks.
The other counselors? Do I have a motion?
Move to authorize the repair as requested, the one-time thing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is business from the council. Who went first last time? Counselor McLeod?
I'd prefer to go last.
I go last.
If that's okay. I, I mean, before you.
Okay. Counselor Montague, more, too?
I have nothing.
Counselor?
I have a couple of things. First and foremost, Counselor Newton Azar and I, well, our birthday is Sunday. And we would like it to be, you know, a city holiday, but that's fine. We won't push it, okay? We run it by, but we are council birthday twins, so happy early birthday, counselor. You stole mine from me. And the second thing is, I met with one of our HRC committee members, and there was a couple of concerns of what their role is, because there's some vagueness in it, and they want to get direction from the council. And they also wanted to be added to maybe do a joint meeting at some point. They said they've been trying to do that for over a year. So I think it'd be good if we could get that on our agenda at some point. In fact, I think it would be best practice to get, at some point, all of the commissions to maybe do a presentation, like once a year or something, so we could at least have a, a update of what's going on, if they need direction, if they're stuck. I think we should make it a best practice to do that. So that's what I wanted to bring up. That's all I have.
Counselor Thompson?
I didn't have anything, but I'll just dovetail. I was on Human Relations at a time. Marilyn was a staff member. Counselor Newton Azar was on Human Relations. It was long, an issue of what is our role, a long, that's constantly something they're grappling with. So, but to, to answer, I would happily, happily have them in, and I think it'd be, we could have a good conversation.
So, thank you for that. Is that, is that it, sir?
Yeah.
Good. Counselor Newton, did you go already?
No.
Go ahead.
I just have been talking a lot today. All right, so I just have.
Azar.
I wanted to also say happy early birthday to Counselor McGee. Hopefully, we'll get some time to celebrate. So also, I had a constituent reach out to me previously about fire safety, specifically about, you know, with the wildfires that happened in Los Angeles. They were concerned about any fire mitigation efforts that we were making. And I sent him over an email. I know that we are doing a few things. They, they wanted us to address maybe some of the fireworks in certain areas, especially with, and maybe even a public education campaign. I do know that our fire department does do some public education in regards to fireworks safety, but I don't know if there's a way we can do more. I'd hate for us to have a huge fire here. That'd be horrible. We have had one fairly close to us, you know, up in the canyon. And then also, I do know that we are, I wanted to know if there was anything for like vegetation management that we were doing, or anything for community education, for, you know, backyard burning. I know that that is allowed and isn't allowed at certain times. And when you drive past the fire station, it lets you know sometimes, if you're able to. But I'm, I'm not sure if there's any additional education opportunities we could have. It just says we're growing as a community, just to make sure that we're safe. And then other than that, that's what I have.
Thank you. That's a great idea, actually.
I believe you were, Counselor Newton, I think you were talking about mitigating fuel for fires, right?
Yes.
And a couple of years ago, we had an interesting program where grant-funded, bringing in goats to try to eat up the, all of the, not all of the fuel, but some of the fuel.
I am so excited.
The kids would love that.
The, the fire department does have a program for getting rid of fuel. We can't always have goats. Apparently, goats are expensive. But, but they do have a program for that.
Okay, we could make it like be a goat, like greatest of all time? Like, you guys know that? For fire safety? I'm just saying, there's something there, we could workshop it.
I think Chief LaBelle would.
I love watching those, those videos of people that have overrun houses, and they bring goats in, and they just clean it up in a week.
We did get a grant from the state fire marshal's office for fuels reduction. Specifically, the area that we're going to target first is southwest 53rd, west towards the Calipia River. But I appreciate the comments. We've had a lot of internal discussions about looking at other places in our community, North Albany, Knoxview, to make sure that we're addressing concerns. And we all saw in 2020 that no community is immune from wildfires, including ours. So yes, it's definitely a high priority. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. There you go. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, my eyebrows worked. I was trying to telegraph Chris, but, because I remembered that grant being approved not long ago. Just a couple of things, I, I'd made some notes as I was going through the packet for today. I was really impressed with the thoughtful letters that we got from people all over the community as a result of the Measure 56 notice for the Housing Implementation Plan Public Hearing. Very, very thoughtful letters. And so I, I was pleased that people took the time to do that. I had a question from the former board president at Helping Hands last week about business licenses for shelters. And that brings up the, one of my favorite topics, which is business licenses, licenses, period. We don't have them. There's no licensing authority statewide for shelters, and we don't have a, a business license here. So I'm just going to throw that back into the arena as something that I would like us to talk about again at some time.
Is that it?
I think so.
Okay. So I've got 1,000 things. So I've got a thousand things, but I'll just keep it to five. Oh, what? Okay. You have more? Oh, I didn't get to you?
No.
Oh, that's right. Okay, you're last. Go ahead.
Thank you. I did receive a lengthy email from Mr. Smith regarding managed growth, and I passed along that information to the department directors who could best help him. And I then did meet with Director Bailey to discuss that. And she will be assisting him with that. I also have, must apologize, I was not able to meet with him last week. I also received a continued contact from the gentleman who was concerned with the issues at Periwinkle Creek. And so I'm continuing to contact with him about that. Another thing is I was looking through the budget, and it's my understanding that the upcoming draft budget is not yet set in stone. Therefore, I have a couple of motions I'd like to make before the budget is proposed to the committee. The Economic Development Fund has approximately $2,773,000 available. It is also my understanding that this fund can be used at the council's discretion. Therefore, I have a couple of timely motions I'd like to make before the budget is proposed to the committee, which would impact the Economic Development Fund. First is in regard to the Central Albany Revitalization Agency. I move to transfer funds in the upcoming 2025-2027 draft budget from the Economic Development Fund, number 21115060, to the CARA Fund, number 29015065, one time only, for the purpose of creating grants to balance the interests of the community at large in the amount of $750,000.
I second that motion.
I don't think we can, I would call on Gina, but I don't think we could move funds from the city to CARA. And I would ask Gina to comment on that.
I think specifically, it's the Albany Revitalization Agency.
Right.
Right. I just want to be clear, yeah. Would be the entity.
Right. Yes, that's right.
Going to tag team with Gina here because she's been on a flight all day coming back from Washington, so she's going on two hours of sleep right now. So talking through the budget, excuse me, my voice is going. So talking through the budget process, so the budget process has literally just kicked off. When we're looking at funding, which I think, looking at wanting to do a grant program is a really great thing for us to look at as we go through this process. One of the things that we would recommend to the council is rather than giving direction as so specific as to provide from this fund to this fund, it would be better for a recommendation to come through or for direction to come through to look at options for providing that. One of the reasons for that is the budget is an incredibly complicated policy document. So when we're looking at options, we're not just looking at one singular pot of money. We're trying to figure out what is the best combination of items in order to make that happen. So there may be other ways or there may be other options. There may be complications that we need to think about in terms of administering. One that immediately comes to mind is that CARA is a separate governing entity. So we can't actually transfer funds like that from those two particular funds that you've mentioned. But those are the pieces that through the budget process, if we know that's a priority for the council, we can work through, come up with options and recommendations for. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that? Or did I cover it?
No, you covered it. Yes, the ARA is a separate agency. And in the agreement when it was established, it will, we make, they're called special payments to help cover staff because they don't have their own staff, but really, that's about it. They are two separate legal entities.
So it would be helpful, I think, if there's some pieces that the council wants to see in terms of larger goals, that would be a really good conversation for the council to have so that as we're going through this process, we can have that in the back of our mind and looking at all of the different puzzle pieces that we have to fit in, to give you guys the best recommendation for the best use of all of the funds that the city has at its disposal, to try and move forward your goals.
I'd like to pick up on this discussion. Having been on the city's Budget Review Committee for 10 years, on the school districts' Budget Committee, and I'm currently on the ESD's Committee, this is the time, I realize there's a Budget Review Committee that meets in the spring, and there's a final budget that's presented at that time. But I do know, you said it's been kicked off, I do know staff is working on things right now. So, you know, councillor McLeod's was very specific, it was a very specific motion, but and I second it, and I would say very strongly that the impetus behind it, I would like to see the council agree to that and direct staff to work on that. And I would like to hear some more detail as to why the Albany Revitalization Agency, which is us, it is the council reconstrued in a different entity, cannot legally have that transfer. I'd be very curious to hear the reasonings why.
Do you want to talk to the state law or do you?
I was going to drop that to Sean, but.
Sure. I'm agreeing with you that this can be pushed off to some time, but it seems early, but I don't think it is. I think we have to be announcing our direction now.
And I'm not saying it's too early to be talking about. I actually think this is a really great time for us to know what the council priorities are so that we can work that in as part of the discussion. What I'm cautioning against is getting that specific so early. So I will pivot to Sean for the more legal, for more of a legal piece next meeting. But what I can tell you is, I know it's a little bit confusing when you have boards that are essentially the same. I've run into this for every urban renewal district. I've had to manage budgets for many of them, and that's always a constant confusion.
Sure.
But state law makes it pretty clear, we can't commingle those funds. And so it really limits our ability. But that is where, when we're talking about and going through the budget process, we know all of the very different types of funding streams that we have. We also know what those limitations are on those funding streams. So we can look at, okay, what is the, what is the goal of the council? Where do they want to go? And what is the best way to piece those together?
I'm sorry, I said chuckle. I mean, this fund has been used in the past, this has gone way back, but it was used for, it's been used for a variety of things. It was used to like buy down people's, the utility bills at one time. It is used for a wide variety, and I think the key phrase that was mentioned is council discretion. So yes, it doesn't have to happen tonight, but.
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend, councillor, that you table this conversation until the city attorney can address the legal aspects of it.
Are you comfortable with that, councillor McLeod? We need, where our attorney's not here to advise it.
I believe we have a.
We have an assistant attorney.
A motion and a second and an assistant attorney here. I don't see why we can't take a vote.
Because the urban, I would tell you that I am fairly confident that it's not legal to transfer money between the city and the ARA. I can't give you a legal opinion because I'm not a lawyer. And Aiden is in her first evening in the chair, and I'm sure that she would have to do some research herself to find out the answer to that. So I don't believe there's any rush in doing this, and it would be, I think we, council would be well advised to wait until the city attorney can comment on it.
Councillor Smith has a comment.
Another thing that occurs to me is that if we were dealing with money related to the Albany Revitalization Agency, we would have to do that in a legally noticed, properly noticed, ARA meeting. We are not in an ARA meeting. We have not noticed one, and so we can't take any action as the Revitalization Agency Board.
Agreed. This is all about future.
Councillor Monogue, you have a question?
So what I think I hear you saying is that this is illegal to do, but this is a good discussion because what you heard councillor McLeod say is that she's looking for some sort of grant program for businesses. Is that kind of your intent with this money?
That is correct.
And I think we've had this discussion, you know, that would require creating a grant program, figuring out how to administer it, also, you know, how we decide who gets the money and all of that. So but I think that's what councillor McLeod's kind of direction for you is?
That's what I understood.
Yes.
That's the intent.
But there was such a specific intent.
If it can't be done through CARA, which it sounds like it probably can't.
When council last discussed this, that was brought up, you'll remember councillor Monogue, about a grant program using our economic development funds. It would be a city grant program, not an ARA grant program. At the time, the council thought that the other priorities on the economic development staff's desk outweighed the creation of a grant program. But that could certainly be revisited, and if the council's wish is to create a grant program, an economic development grant program, we can certainly do that.
And that's part of the due diligence that would be done through the budget process. So we would look at what are the options for a program and funding like that, as well as the options for administering. I can tell you from 10 long years of doing budget management and grants coordination, it is a pretty lengthy staff involvement to manage a program like that. State obligations are usually pretty specific on making sure that you're covering and monitoring and reporting on any grant-type programs. But sitting here tonight, we wouldn't have enough information to tell you what would need to be done in order to support a program of that size. But if that is, you know, a priority for council, it's certainly something we can look at and bring to you as part of the budget discussions.
So do you need to rescind your motion?
Or amend it?
Or just going to leave it out there?
Well, I would think that there's a couple of choices here. One is councillor McLeod could withdraw her motion, or councillor Thompson could withdraw his second, or you could go ahead and have the vote, and then we would come back and tell you later that that's, it's not a legal thing to do. I think I would recommend the former that the motion be withdrawn.
It's going to come back with direction for the budget process.
Councillor Newton Azar, did you have a comment?
I was saying amend it for like a program? Is that what?
Nope. She was first, bring staff back with a budget program, but she went, not a budget, a grant program, but she went to specific funds.
Okay. Could you amend it to be like a, to request a budget program presented by staff?
Oh, I apologize.
Like a budget program? I'm just thinking out loud. Amend it to be a budget program or like ask staff to create a budget program? I don't know. I'm trying to figure out.
I think starting fresh would be easier.
May I recommend that you allow staff, Sophie and Matthew to come back with an idea of what it would take to flesh out what Kayla has mentioned, what it would take to create a grant program in the economic, within the Economic Development Fund. And then you can give further direction that you do or do want to pursue that.
Okay, with that, I will withdraw my second to, with the intention that you create a motion similar to what the city manager just described.
Actually, it doesn't take a motion. She can just say, I would like a grant program. So I'd like to see what it looks like. So we're giving them direction to run a racket grant program.
Do we have, do we have a consensus for that direction?
Well, we can ask, councillor, how do you feel about asking for a grant program to come back to us?
Yes, like.
Thumbs up?
Yes.
Okay, we got consensus.
I'm okay with them coming back with order, rough order of magnitude on what that would take and then what other priorities are we going to have to shelve if we do go forward with that? Because I would like to, I know there's some other priorities in there that I'm interested in, so I want to make sure we know what we're foregoing for that.
Zach, are you comfortable with that?
Yes. Yes. And so thank you for bearing with me, as I know this is a little lengthy. A second is in regard to the availability of public art throughout the city of Albany. As a former city arts commissioner, I have seen firsthand public arts proposals become dead in the water after years of broken promises. We currently have $200 in the budget for public art. The First Fridays events cost the Arts Commission at minimum $50 per month. This type of underfunding is not fair and is not in the best interest of our community. Mural projects, street painting and other public art displays need to be funded in a way that acknowledges and respects the importance of public art and is able to pay artists a respectable, livable wage. A mural project alone can cost upwards of $10,000 to complete. Therefore, I move to transfer funds in the upcoming 2025-2027 draft budget, one time only, from the Economic Development Fund, number 21115060, to the Parks and Recreation Fund, public arts line item 20250000-431050, for the purposes of funding public art installation projects, matching grants and fundraising efforts for the arts within Albany City limits in the amount of $10,000.
I second that motion too. Get some discussion going.
And once again, would you, would you consider asking the staff to look into, this is the first we're hearing of it, so to look into your intent, which is to fund an arts program with, by funding the Arts Commission, and to look at finding ways to do that. And I would say, consider what it'll do in the budget process, and maybe even go through the budget process and make that a part of the budget when we create it. Rather than being as specific as you just mentioned from one account to another account, there may be other ways to accomplish the same thing. So if you just express your intent, we can come back and report on it.
This may be the first that you're hearing of it, but as a city arts commissioner, we were having this discussion the entire time I was on the commission. We were talking about getting line item funding for public art. And like I said, it costs the commission at least, at minimum $50 a month to fund First Fridays alone, and there is only $200 in the budget. How are we supposed to pay for a mural that has been promised for years by multiple people? How are we supposed to pay for that when we receive grants in the amount of maybe $3,000 at most? How are we supposed to fund a mural project or any other type of public art project that can cost upwards of $10,000? How is that supposed to happen? I don't understand that.
Here's why I asked to have people come and present so that we know this. I mean, I hear your frustration, but I also want to caution that if this is the first of staff is hearing about this, I don't think that it's in good faith that we just move without them even, this is their first time hearing it. I think it'd be better relationship building if they would be able to be at the table when this is coming up multiple times, if they've just not heard about that. I don't think that that's, I just don't think that that's working with staff cooperatively, personally.
Well, and just to throw in there, and I think it would be really great because it sounds like you've got a lot of ideas in regards to the budget process and sort of things that you'd like to see. I think it would be really good to sit down and kind of talk through what that looks like in some of those opportunities so that we can present that to council holistically. Because one of the things that's immediately coming to my mind as I'm hearing this is, when you're talking about funding for art, I'm assuming the intent is long-term, not to just do one statute rape. You'd probably be looking for things more long-term. So my mind is immediately racing through, what are the other funding sources? Where would we have to make trade-offs? Are there opportunities that are more sustainable, long-term, to really, to really support, you know, arts programs within the city? But getting this on the spot here, we don't have the ability to do that due diligence, which is normally what we would do through the budget process, is to be able to look at and see if there's options and possibly sometimes even maybe options you didn't know existed.
Comments?
Because I absolutely hear your frustration there, and it's valid frustration.
I have a comment.
Councillor Smith has a comment.
Taking a little bit broader view based, and chiming in with something that councillor McGee said earlier, that all of our boards and commissions are charged with making recommendations to the council. We very seldom hear from them. And if they've been discussing this for a long time, I know, I know that, I've heard rumors of that kind of thing. We haven't been told as a council that that's something that the commission was concerned about. We've also heard that the Human Relations Commission wants to get together with us, but there's been no recommendation for, there's been no recommendation come forward with that. It would be good to meet with the commissions and encourage them, encourage staff, who, the people who staff those commissions, to remind them that if they are. the people who staff those commissions, to remind them that if they are talking about things they want the council to know about, get that information to us because we'd like to hear it.
Yeah, and I can say to the Human Relations Commission, so Director Ladain, who is the staff liaison for that, has actually reached out to them. I think they have their, I can't remember when their next meeting. It's pretty, it's pretty soon. So, one of the things that she talked about with them and is going to be talking about at the next meeting is actually doing a facilitation with them to work through what a work plan for them could look like, so that when they bring that presentation to council, there are some very specific items that they can look at and propose and bring recommendations to council to say, hey, yep, that sounds in line with what we'd like to do, or, mm, almost there, but maybe not quite what we want. In conversations with Director Ladain several years ago, there was a rework of their mission vision, but that follow-up piece of what does that look like potentially or could look like in execution didn't really happen. So, the idea there is give them an opportunity to flesh some of that out, so that there's some content that the council can talk to, speak to, let them know if that's going in the right direction, or hey, you need to pivot this way. So, that's actually going to get talked to them at their next meeting.
So, why don't you like to rescind your motion? Or will you draw your second?
Yeah, I'll rescind my second. Just understand that the discussion starts now and we'll come back to it.
Thank you.
I have one thing that I forgot to mention. Can I quickly interject? Since I know that the hip is coming back for another reading, can we discuss, I know Anne Catlin had mentioned like, oh, there's that one sentence we can discuss, we could take some time, are we able to take some time and discuss that? Sort of pull anything out later?
So, that...
And what's the sentence?
It was from the historic districts for the, for the...
Uses other than residential?
Yeah, just, I'm not sure if we're able to discuss that, like, when it comes back to council, if, just so we can get everything done all at once.
I think that's going to be discussed holistically with the historic district conversation that you were talking about.
Correct, yeah. Those, making changes to an ordinance you've done in first reading, I mean, we really can't do that between the first and the second reading necessarily, but we need to have that public input process, which we can't have in three weeks, you know, by February 12th. So, the historic district overlay standards review is underway, and this would just be a good fit with that. And we're always starting on our next round of code amendments that we know, and we've got that on the list, and, you know, there's always something that gets overlooked and whatever. But it is something we absolutely will bring back, but it needs a public process. So, that means we need to reach out to the community, and that's going to take time. And that's what you want to have happen, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I was just thinking like, oh, can we just bring that back? Okay, perfect.
So, that was one of my things, my thing.
Oh, perfect, all right.
So, I'm glad, thank you very much for that.
Reading's hers minds, perfect.
So, I have less to talk about.
Perfect.
City Day with the Capitol's coming up, and Peter's going to talk about, he had a conversation with the LOC, but basically, Counselor Smith, Counselor McLeod, myself will be going.
And myself.
And because I know you asked, the LOC's lawyer says it's a quorum, and we cannot be there together.
Oh, sure, no, no, I understand, I'm going, I'm not, yeah, I get, we can't meet, yeah, we can't meet.
Let me clarify, that's just for the, just for the meetings with legislators. I hope, I hope Counselor Thompson does come to...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, I thought we were supposed to schedule our own meetings.
No, they said it's city meetings.
Oh, I just scheduled my own, so...
Yeah, that's fair, too.
More power to you.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, I just, I just called him and talked to him myself.
Yeah.
So, that's coming up on the 28th, and it's going to be a long day. And so, we're going to be there from, what, 8 o'clock in the morning, 8 o'clock in the, sorry, Kenzie, 8 o'clock in the morning to what, 6:00 or something like that?
Depends if you want to stay for the social in the late afternoon.
So, 6:00 for me, I'll come at home. Okay. Thank you for taking that off my plate with the housing implementation plan, and great discussion, I think we needed this discussion, and thank you very, all for participating in that. But I have some good news. You know, I'm on the board for Y Veterans Housing, the YMCA Veterans Housing. We had to receive the OHCS grant from $10 million to $11 million, property secured, and we're going to be moving forward with that project. We still have some fundraising to do, but it's going to get 38 to 40 veterans out of shelter and housing. So, that project is, will be starting soon. And then, what is all of that? Oh, my neighbor walked out of his house, I live by Telo Kalapulua Park, over by that meadow that Matthew Crystal Bell had mentioned. He said, "We have a cat problem." How long have I been talking about cats? Right?
That was a gut reaction, I didn't need to do that.
The problem, the problem is that the owl moved, so now our cats are back. When she comes back, then the cats will be gone again. But, so we have a cat problem, so that discussion will probably come up again in council. I know we had a turkey problem, I'm sure we're going to have some more cat people coming.
Employ some goats, employ some owls.
Yes. So, it's a real thing, and I did go down to the park because he is my neighbor, and I walked down there and I threw a ball, and they scurried, like, I lost the ball, but I know there's cats there. So, and with that, if a mayor contest is going on right now, I will be soliciting help from the community of people that I know, like and trust. I was informed by Kalapulua Middle School that 70 children are writing essays right now of what they want for their city in the future. That frightens me because Middle School Memorial called and invited me out to meet with four classrooms full of 30 kids apiece to go over the process as well. So, Albany's program has grown from 71 to approximately 170 kids participating, and we won state twice. And I'm hoping to repeat that, this same thing this year. Our children are all about it, and they're asking questions, and each of the schools have a part of our, they have our strategic plan, and I actually go to the schools and go over it with them. So, it's pretty exciting for me. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to address Mr. Charlie's comments earlier this evening, where he, it made, it sounded as if the applicant who Charlie represents wasn't getting a fair shake. I wanted to remind you that you heard from him in early December. We responded to him afterwards from the staff, reminding him, because he had contacted us, reminding him that, and I quote from my email, which I will send to you, that the council's decision was to deny the request at this time and to ask the applicant to work with staff to provide the requested materials. The council had requested that a wetland delineation be performed and that a preliminary site plan be created. And to this date, to our knowledge, applicants have not taken those steps. I reassured him that we're willing to help, we remain willing to help with alternatives, and that the community development staff could shed some light on how access to the property is intended to be provided off of Broadway. So, the council had made a decision at that point, and it would be, as I told him, inappropriate to place the item on the agenda again without having completed the stipulation in the motion that was approved. I did also remind him that he has the right, and the Williams, the property owners, have a right to speak to the council during business from the public and/or write directly to you. So, that's where it stands. Chris Bailey's able to answer any questions that you might have, but he, we continue to be willing to, very willing to work with him on trying to get his easement to that property. Any questions? Okay. I wanted to remind you that you have a council retreat on Monday at the Police Department's Community Room, and that's from 4:00 to 7:00. And then, as the mayor mentioned, League of Oregon City's City Day is on Tuesday, the 28th. And that's all I have for you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Will Bentley be at the retreat? That's a special request, just in case, we need comfort.
So, thank you very much, Peter. Next meeting date is January 27th at 4:00 p.m. at the training, the retreat at the Police Department, Albany Police Department, and then Monday, February 10, 2025, at 4:00 p.m. for a work session. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting.